Good evening. It is 6:30, and this is a special meeting of the Rockport City Council held on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 at 6:30. It is that time. I will ask that you all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda items we have tonight are all interrelated, and we find that they are awfully close in subject matter, and I want to see that because they are much alike, there is opportunity that anything that anyone might add or want to say could be misconstrued from one item to the other. We're going to allow people to speak at the time the item is called on the agenda tonight. First is citizens to be heard. We have no citizens to be heard on an item that is not related to the agenda. Let me be sure that's right. Therefore, when the agenda item is called, you may speak at that time. Item number three is under public hearing. We'll have two items on a public hearing. It is 6:32 as public hearing begins. Number three is conduct a public hearing on the city of Rockport fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. We'll do them now. Yep.
Patrick Kane, 1123 East Cedar Street, Rockport. I am opposed to the city's proposed budget. The city should be able to do better than maintain status quo if it is bringing 12.91% more revenue from property taxes. Yet, that is all the city manager has said the city can do with an extra $1 million, which leaves the following unfunded and proposed budget per the city manager: one, drainage; two, streets; three, parkland acquisition and development; and four, utility line replacement and expansion. Kristi Rutledge, 14-
You want to speak in person on this?
Yes. Let her speak.
What agenda item is that on?
It's on public hearing.
Public hearing number three.
It says number three.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to replace this from our written comments. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to speak on each agenda item. I think that's really important tonight because these are interrelated, but they do affect each one of us who live here. The budget of public hearing, I've been here at all the meetings. I've followed your budget for years. I'm really concerned about the lack of transparency in this budget. I have been asking every meeting about your capital improvement plan. I have been asking where money has been moved to, specifically your American Recovery Plan, $2.8 million that was earmarked for the wastewater treatment plan last year. I have been asking where the $2.2 million that was earmarked for the wastewater treatment plan and other water projects has been allocated, and I have gotten no answers. I have not seen your capital improvement plan that you are basing much of your budget on be delivered to the public. It's changed from last year. Money's moved around. The 2007 bonds have been allocated to different things like Concho Street according to your capital improvement budget, your general fund budget, and Concho Street is a part of the 2020 tax notes. So that's really puzzling. I'm not sure if that's legal, but that's all that it says in the budget, and that's all that we've received. I did get a photocopy of the capital improvement plan from your day-one workshop, and it looks like the downtown Austin Street rebuild has been replaced as a 2022-2023 project, and it looks like the money for the wastewater treatment plant, about the same amount, has been allocated to Concho Street. So I'm really concerned that we're defunding our critical infrastructure. I'm really concerned that there's no transparency with your citizens about what your budget is about. Your capital improvement projects are what will lead us forward for the next five or 10 years. That's what will secure our future, our safety, our life, our well-being. I'm very concerned that the Rockport Country Club drainage sediment removal has been removed from your capital improvement budget. The photo that I took, there was $2,007 bond money allocated for that last year, and on the day-one handout, which was not given to the public willingly in an agenda packet, and that meeting wasn't recorded, that is zeroed out, and I don't understand why. So I think that I'd like to see what capital improvement projects you have for general fund and for utilities and what money is assigned to those, because you did say that if money's assigned to them, then they need to be voted on by council, and I have not seen a vote on those downtown projects.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address item number three in the public hearing? We'll go to item number four. Conduct a public hearing on city of Rockport 2023.
Patrick Kane, 1123 East Cedar Street, Rockport. I am opposed to the tax increase proposed by the city, which the state mandated disclosure shows as a 16.33% increase in taxes on the average homestead. Please avoid the double speak tonight about how you're reducing our tax rate while blaming the appraisal district for raising our taxes. The city sets the tax rate, not the appraisal district, and your own notice for this public hearing clearly states that you are proposing a tax increase. Let's also be clear about the rate you've proposed, as you have had to play games with the unused increment to jack the rate up from basic voter approval tax rate of 0.342 to the proposed rate of 0.360, which is the difference between an effective rate increase of 7.3% and 11.26%. To add insult to injury, the 16.33% increase in taxes on average homestead simply maintains status quo with city services instead of addressing drainage, roads, and other critical needs. Given that, it doesn't seem like the city is being a good steward of the taxpayers' money. Robin Wright, 1510 Bluebird, Rockport. I am absolutely opposed to the proposed tax- excuse me. I am absolutely opposed to the proposed property tax increase. How can you justify this? Many of us in Rockport are already struggling with insurance, fuel prices, etc., and now you want to bury us with a huge tax increase. Please reject this increase. Do like we on fixed incomes must do. Stay within the budget you already have. Many of us are having to ask the question of how long can we continue to live in Rockport if this and other increases are voted in. Please consider truly representing your constituents, consider their struggles. Please vote against this. Robin Wright.
We called this item a minute ago. I had swallowed some water and got choked, and when I quit breathing for a second, he started talking, so I want to read what it was we were talking about right there, so you have it for the record. Conduct a public hearing in the city of Rockport, 2023 property tax rate for taxpayers to have an opportunity to express their views on the tax rate. The city of Rockport will adopt the budget and tax rate for fiscal year 2023-2024 on September 12, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. at the Rockport Service Center, 2751 State Highway 35 bypass, Rockport, Texas. Does anyone else wish to address? Which is that what yours is on?
Mine says item four.
Item four, go ahead.
Nancy Bolting, 201 Spanish Woods Drive, item number four. I'd like to thank the city council, Mayor Jarrow, and city staff that worked on the budget for the city of Rockport. When budgets are discussed, it's very difficult considering the amount of taxes needed to support our local government. My husband and myself support the new budget, with exceptions to the residential and commercial water rate increases, which may seem minor, but during inflationary time is drastic and though struggling to make ends meet. This is a necessity, not a luxury, that residents and commercial businesses need daily. Thank you, Nancy Bolting.
Anyone else wish to address it?
Can I speak on the taxes?
Go ahead.
Kristi Rutledge, 1411 Dana Drive. I am opposed to the 16.3% tax increase for a lot of reasons. Obviously, we're having 16% tax increases here, 23% to 24% at the county, no telling what the school district is going to come in. I presented to you all, or I tried to, at one of the very first meetings, some handouts on line items within the budget which represent taxation that are not spent year after year. And if you don't spend something that you're budgeting for, where does it go to? It just goes into nowhere land, just like our American Recovery Plan money has, and now it's reallocated without our knowledge. And so, propping the budget up with unspent line items is wrong. It's wrong to tax us unnecessarily for things that you do not intend to purchase year after year, and you can go back and look at the budget and you can compare, you can download in claret.gov back to 2010, the entire budget book, and there is a lot of line items. So the other thing about this tax increase is that there's really no justification for increasing any expenses this year. So all expenses should have been leveled out at last year for real expenses or deleted, and some hard decisions should have been made to keep this tax increase down. You all are elected to serve the citizens of Rockport, not the city, and the citizens of Rockport are going to bear the burden of this tax increase. Yes, we have problems with our utilities, and they need to be addressed, but I've been following for three years, and they aren't addressed, with the exception of 20-something people that came out, or 30 people that came out about the Rockport Country Club, where we able to get some action taken on that drainage. But basically, everything gets kicked down the road every year, and it falls into developers' hands, and it falls into the first developer that comes into the room, and this is causing a tax increase on us, and we have no idea how the money's spent, because once this budget's adopted at 16.3%, then it goes into fund balances, and it gets spent however we want. So you all need to put some limits on it so that we have some honesty and transparency, and you also need to delete those unnecessary budget line items, because that is what builds our tax rate, and it's not right to unnecessarily tax us. Thank you.
Anyone else on this particular item?
Katie Jackson, 2205 Monkey Road. First of all, the people that speak in opposition should be losing a lot of weight because they're jumping to conclusions left and right, having sat in that seat, having had to look at the budget. There is money there that probably is not going to get spent, but it has to be budgeted in case it needs to be spent. Where does that money go? And please correct me if I'm wrong, but that money goes into the general reserves. Into the reserves. What do the reserves do? The reserves are what kept us from having to take out massive loans after Harvey. The city was able to pay all of their matches to get all of the things that they needed to get done to recover from Harvey immediately after. If we would not have had that money, we would still have trash sitting near my house on 12th. If we would not have had that money, we would still be fighting to get cleaned up. So those line items that don't get spent go into the reserve. I do not know what the reserve is right now for days of operation, but it's not 180, which is council policy. I don't even think it's 60. I don't know what it is. But the city does need to move forward. Expansion of the capital, capital in the CIP to a line item so we can at least see what the plan is would be nice. We do demand that the council wisely spends our money, which contrary to some believe we have in the past. I cannot do that anymore. I'm not a councilor, so I expect you all to do that. I am hoping that you do not lower the proposed rate because the city does need the money. I don't know where the 16% is coming from. I honestly don't. Someday I'll find out, probably jumping to conclusions. I see 12%. Well, that's a nice little chunk of change, but there's nothing wrong with it. The truth and taxation covers everything that you're asking for, and that's what state statute is for, which is what you have to operate with, within state statute. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Anyone else want to speak on item number four? If not, we'll close the public hearing. It is 6:46 p.m. We'll call it Agenda Item Number Five. Deliberate and act on second final reading of an ordinance amending the city of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102 Utilities, Article 2 Water Service, Division 3 Service Charges by Amending Water Rates for All Customers Providing for Validity of Said Ordinance, Repealing All Prior Ordinances in Conflict Here With Providing for an Effective Date. Substantial changes to the proposed ordinance are made. This will serve as the first reading of said ordinance. I have Kristi Rutledge wishing to address item number five.
Kristi Rutledge, 1411 Dana Drive. I'm opposed to the water, the proposed water rate increases, and I ask you to take another consideration. The increases represent, we've been increased on our water rate for the last two years, and this will be the third year. They've been steep increases. They were leveled across the board until this year, when council decided to add an additional surcharge to out-of-city and commercial in-city, out-of-city residential and out-of-city commercial and in-city. My problem with your rate increases is it's not supported by capital improvement projects that you intend to do. You had capital improvement projects last year that were funded with 2007 bond money, and they were funded with ARP money, and they were waiting to be done, and they have not been done. And that money is now not going to those water capital improvement projects, but you're passing off a tax increase, basically, to Fulton and Aransas County and to the citizens of Rockport, all of your utility customers, because you are limited by the amount of taxes that you can raise through your general fund for property taxes. So I heard during the March 2020 strategic planning session, comments made from city staff or an advisor, I don't remember which, that unlimited utilities, bonds, and debt, and rate increases can happen, but you were limited to the amount of tax increases. What's coming out of your water revenues, your profits, is going back into the general fund by way of general admin salary line items, by line items that are transferring from non-departmental water and wastewater to the general fund. You're effectively putting an increased tax on all of your utility customers, because you can't do it through property tax. My other problem with it is that you do have developers coming and asking for a lot of water service that you're having a trouble figuring out whether you can provide. You don't know if there's enough water available. They're asking for, you want to pre-purchase meters because supplies are limited. There's a million dollars in the budget for that. So what is happening is utility customers, current utility customers, specifically out-of-city utility customers, are paying a premium for new developments, when new developments need be paying 100% upfront for all of that stuff, and it's passing a tax off on that. That is my opinion on that. That's the way I see it, switching through your budget, getting the million dollar in water-
Our meters is just to have-
Thank you. Kathy Kane?
Kathy Kane, 109 Boardwalk Avenue. I'm opposed to the U3 charges for non-city water customers. Despite sharing concerns with city staff not justifying the increased rates, I know which way this will end. I heard Councilmember Hatman last week say, "We need to address the needed improvements," and I agree. I just don't believe it has to happen all on the backs of the non-city customers who make up 41% of your customer base. City residents pay 22.52, and non-city will pay $33.06 per gallon. That's a 47% unsubstantiated U3 charge. Your non-city commercial customers face 38% more than their city counterparts. Councilmember Hale said, "Her job is to do what is best for her ward." If that is the case, then who is representing the non-voting customers? According to her logic, none of you are, which is why you're placing the rate increase on the non-city customers. I believe you're peddling lower water rates for votes.
Thank you, ma'am. Katie Jackson?
Katie Jackson, 2205 Monkey Road. A tax is something paid to a governmental entity for their general use, police, fire, street and drainage maintenance, employee wages, supplies, gasoline, building and development functions, et cetera. A fee is paid to do something or receive a service which is not available to everyone unless the fee is paid, and the person or entity paying the fee has the equipment to receive said service. Licensing fees, franchise fees, water service fees, wastewater service fees, filing fees, building permit fees, impact fees, et cetera. As usual, it comes down to definitions. Water is a service, therefore it's a fee. It is not a tax. Period and a statement. Simple definitions. It's a service. Anybody within the city or outside the city, to the best of my knowledge, can choose to not use city water. I do not know if that's a true statement, but I'm going to go forward assuming it's true for the minute. My turn to jump. So instead of paying $10 more a month, go ahead and spend $50,000 and drill a well. Kind of sucks when you are in a sole source situation, and there's nobody that can give you water except for the city. I like my well water. I don't want city water. But please keep in mind also, with your rate increase, to everybody except in city, those rate increases pay for six entities in specific. The time for the city manager on utilities, the time for the finance director on utilities, especially budget season, the time for the assistant to the city manager for project management, grant application, development, dispersal of planned and unplanned outage messaging, and other administrative functions, the city secretary for public information, request coordination, collection, preparation, and filing of legal documents and other needs. Utilities do not pay for human resources at all. They do not pay for public communications, which is all the necessary emergent communications via Code Red related to water, wastewater, after-hours fielding of calls, and dispatching for outages and other issues for water and wastewater. There's where the extra comes from. There is no money in the utility budget for those specific functions, which are necessary for the city to take care of business and inform the citizens and make sure everything is above board. And notice, I didn't even put legal in there. Thank you.
Patrick Kane, 1123 East Cedar Street, Rockport. I'm opposed to the surcharge for out-of-city utility customers as it is unjust and not supported with any data. At the last meeting, you learned the city couldn't attribute any added cost for delivering utilities outside the city limits, yet you doubled down and increased the out-of-city surcharge from 38% to 47% for the base water service and from 40% to 50% for each additional 1,000 gallons of water used. This represented a 10.4% rate increase for out-of-city customers while asking the in-city residential customers to pay only 3.6% more. In-city commercial customers also saw a 10% rate increase, which represents a new 6.2% surcharge on top of the residential rate. Please do the right thing. Treat all customers fairly and equitably by either eliminating or severely reducing the rate surcharges.
Before any actions taken by the council, any discussion by council, we will establish the presence of a quorum by road call. Ward one.
Here.
Ward two.
Here.
Ward three.
Here.
Ward four.
Here.
Mayor, here. We do have a quorum. Deliberate and take action on second and final reading. We'll read this again, since we've had a lot of discussion here. Deliberate and take action, second final reading of an ordinance amending the city of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102 Utilities, Article 2 Water Service, Division 3 Service Charges by Amending Water Rates for All Customers Providing for the Validity of Said Ordinance, Repealing All Prior Ordinances in Conflict Here With Providing for an Effective Date. If substantial changes to the proposed ordinance are made, this will serve as the first reading of said ordinance. Council, do you have questions?
Just to make one comment, and I just want to make sure that it's kind of just kind of tie together. When we say that the Human Resources Fund is being paid out of our general fund to fund these utilities, that's coming from avant-garde taxes, which is coming from city residents. So when we look at raising the rates on outside, because they're not paying that inside-city residents rates, they're paying just the one fee. So they're getting the same kind of services that in-city is by paying just that one fee as of the in-city. So personally, I just look at it as it actually is more comparable with each other because they're paying those two fees. So I just, that's, I want to make that comment there.
Are there other questions? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Five as read.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Nay.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Passage four to one. Item number six. Deliberate and act on second final reading of an ordinance amending the city of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102 Utilities, Article 3 Wastewater Service, Division 4 Service Charges by Amending Wastewater Rates for All Customers Providing for the Validity of the Ordinance, Repealing All Prior Ordinances in Conflict Here With Providing for an Effective Date. If substantial changes to the proposed ordinance are made, this will serve as the first reading of said ordinance.
Patrick Kane, 1123 East Cedar Street, Rockport. I'm opposed to the surcharge for out-of-city wastewater customers as it is unjust and not supported with any data. Because of a 42% out-of-city rate surcharge, the out-of-city residential customers are disproportionately impacted by your 12% rate increase and have to pay 3.92 cents, $3.92 more per month for their base service compared to the extra $2.73 per month in-city residential customers will pay. The only consolation for the out-of-city residential customers is they aren't commercial customers, since you raised their rates by an astronomical 27%. You may have a legitimate need to raise rates. However, you need to do the right thing and treat all customers fairly and equitably, and unsupported egregious out-of-city rates are charged and is not just and should be either eliminated or severely reduced.
Kristi Rutledge? Kristi Rutledge?
Kristi Rutledge, fourteen eleven Dana Drive. Utility rate increases are not justified by any projects that have been presented to the public in a public meeting. I don't know what you all are talking about privately in your emails or in your workshops that aren't recorded. Man, I know you are, but you're not telling the public what capital improvement projects are there to support these utility rate increases. This is our third year, huge rate increases for the wastewater treatment plant. And word on the street is, there's big problems there, but that project's been defunded. There was three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars spent, projected for twenty-two, twenty-three, for all of the utility capital improvement projects, but there was five point eight million dollars budgeted. You have no idea what you're doing next year, but you've budgeted four point nine million dollars. We have no idea for what. So these rate increases are not justified. The prior year, twenty-one to twenty-two, you spent around six hundred, you had six hundred thousand dollar surplus in your utility capital improvement plan. So to say that these weight, rate increases are necessary to support your capital improvement plan are just wrong. It's just a lie. Okay? Because what I find back in the budget are new water extensions, new wastewater extensions, first street to gag on, first street to wherever. You're trying to get down to one eighty-eight for a big project down south of the city, outside of the city limits, but I don't see anything about repairing our current infrastructure. I see on the chart that was put up here that we couldn't read. There was no handouts given on it. You had all these different boxes that was keying in real time what the rate increases would be. A little note down at the bottom that said fourteen million dollars or sixteen million dollars in bonds would be taken out for utilities. For what? You're transferring the money out of your utilities through things like franchise fees. Why are you charging your City of Rockport residents and your utility customers a franchise fee for a utility that the city owns? That's something you would charge like a cable company or a phone service, but not something that you own. And so in general fund admin and general fund building and development, you're taking money out of our utility accounts and you're raising the rates on us, but you have no projects to support your rate increases. So I would like some transparency with...
Counsel, questions? If there are no questions, do I have a motion?
Move to approve item six as presented.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Nay.
Ward two. Ward three. Ward four. Mayor, aye. Passages four to one. I'm number seven. Deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance of the City of Rockport approving the assessment and renditions for twenty-twenty-three taxable property as submitted by the appraisal district, levying a tax rate for one hundred dollar valuation for the City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas for the tax year twenty-twenty-three of zero point two one three five eight three for the purpose of maintenance and operation and zero point one four six four nine five for payment of principal and interest on debt for the city, and that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point three six zero zero seven eight, which is effectively a, an eleven point two six percent increase in the tax rate, providing for a lien on all real and personal property to secure payment for taxes thereon, containing a severability clause, repealing all ordinances and parts thereof in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operation than last year's tax rate. This tax rate will effectively raise by twelve point eight two percent and will raise taxes for maintenance and operation on a one hundred thousand dollar home by approximately negative six dollars and ninety-three cents. I have one person, Kristi Rutledge. Did she leave? Okay, she's gone. Never mind, she's not here anymore. Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to say that, of course, this is the first reading of the ordinance that's been used to support this twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget book, and budget is approaching fifty-six million dollars. So that's what this has all been built on, and we really appreciate your support.
Questions, counsel?
Let's just go back just real quick, because we had a couple customer, or a couple citizen questions, and we just want to make sure we address those, so they get through things. So let's talk about the ARPA funds with the wastewater.
The ARPA funds?
Yes.
So the wastewater treatment plant will be advertised, it's been advertised last week. It's, I think it will be advertised next week. It should be bid.
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow. I'm sorry. It should be bid and built, and construction will start at the end.
And those funds are still being taken away.
Nothing has changed. It's still ARPA funds and unused bond funds that will fix it. The information that you just received is completely incorrect. Okay?
Nothing's been unfunded.
No.
I didn't see that in the C I P plan, that it was, it's funded, so.
Right. So the C I P plan and the unused bond funds are different items.
Correct. Yeah.
So if it's unused bond funds or the ARPA funds that y'all had when we, when I got here, that is a separate fund, those funds have now been isolated, and they are being spent on the projects that you approved.
Correct.
The C I P plan is what you have there in front of you. That's what we will fund either through debt or for, through utility rates.
And we have, even through utility rates right now, we're not able to fund any of those projects because we're still running.
You're still running in the hole.
We're still running, even if with the rate increases.
Even with the rate increases, you will not raise enough revenue to fund the capital improvement plan.
So right now, we're just trying to play catch-up, is what my thought.
Right. So right now, you will still be taking out of your reserves to fund the utilities.
And to, to put that back out here, because we have some new faces in the crowd, our reserves are what again?
Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry. I don't have that offhand.
I believe during the budget was about two to three.
I'm sorry. So in the utility fund.
For both reserves. So the utility fund, and then we can talk about the general fund, because right now we're talking about the tax rate.
Okay. So projected at the end of this coming fiscal year, our utility fund will have gone down from a hundred and sixty-three days of working balance to ninety.
So that's at seven million down to five million, correct?
That's correct. Seven point two down to five point four.
Which means we're not even building our reserves. We're lowering the reserves now, even with the rate increase.
Correct.
So the C I P projects that are speaking of, we can't even manage to do those as of right now.
You have to raise your C I P, you have to raise your rates enough to generate one million dollars in excess revenue above our fees in order to pay the debt service on the proposed bond. If you do not, if you choose to just fund, pay as you go, you would need to raise, I think, one point five million. Hold on, I'll tell you.
I believe you're close to that number.
You would have to raise, oh, yeah, one point five. But you also did not, were not able to do any last year, so you're, you're behind on that. But anyway.
So the point is, we're behind. And just to kind of put that right now. So the money that we're spending even on the utilities and all this stuff, this is just for expenditures alone. This is not to do any extra projects, not to do anything on top of that. So what my, and I just want to make sure that these questions answered. Another thing that was brought up with the country club, we spent almost nine hundred thousand in the country club last year, and we did use unspent money to clean out sediments, and we did utilize those funds appropriately where they were supposed to. So I just want to make sure I clarify that and make sure that that statement is out there right now, because that is not exactly what happened. And so I just want to make...
The country club project was finished, the drainage and the bond, the sediment clean-out.
But that money for the sediment was not redirected to any other project. It was used for what it was supposed to be, and it was allocated for. So I just wanted to make sure that comment was also there.
Correct.
So right now, I am done. Anyone else?
We also have about, as I recall, three million dollars in work about to be done on the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, sir. That's what's going to bid, and that's what's the unspent bond funds and the ARPA money will, will fund that. So that's, construction should start in October. We have not done the unspent bond projects as quickly as we would like to, but I have, we have spent some time isolating that money whereby it previously had been intermingled. And so the finance team has isolated it and ensured that every dollar is there. And so we've been kind of spending those slowly while we're isolating those. But I, that has been done, and every project on the unspent bond fund will either be started or completed in this coming year, one of the two.
And we did have a two, two-day workshop where we did go line by line, each one of our councils, and had time to go line by line, and we took that time, and we took the energy and, you know, made sure that we looked at every line item and make sure they're not spending anything more than they needed to. There is one thing that I'm just going to, you know, make sure that is in headwind is, again, the one thing that we did not like to see was the, having money, like especially in the drainage and the, and stuff like that still left over at the end of the year. Make sure that's being spent where it needs to be spent, and making sure these projects, if we have the money to get done, are being allocated in the correct way and doing that.
Any money allocated for maintenance will be spent. That, I think that hasn't been a previous philosophy. I think we understand now that that is where that money will go. I don't have a problem. And I'm not trying to throw shade. I'm sorry for that. But we, we've changed, we've changed philosophies.
It's absolutely necessary that we maintain our infrastructure for the city, and we're doing everything we can with this budget to do that. We're trying to see that wastewater treatment streets and everything that we have are maintained, because we owe that to all the citizens, all of them. Other questions?
No, I'm good. I appreciate Councilwoman Hatman's comments and clarifying some of the inaccuracies that were provided during public hearing with regards to the unspent maintenance fund. I think that was exceptionally clear in our workshop of what our expectation is for staff to get that taken care of, and I trust that there's a plan to get that done. So I don't have anything to add, ma'am.
Mayor, one more comment. I appreciate the fact that, that staff pumped the brakes a little bit and went through it, and we're going to try to move forward correctly so we don't find some more of that unspent bond money, you know, those little nuggets that we keep finding. And I appreciate the fact that y'all spent so much time working through that so that we, we try to get it right, correct some of the wrongs that we, we found. So I appreciate that greatly.
And just one other thing. Can you just explain the, the one million dollars in water meters, please? Just clarify that.
Sure. Mike has been through this before, but there is a back order and a backlog on orders for the type of water meter and endpoints that we need. We put in one million dollars to buy them because we have to order and purchase, and we don't know when we will get and receive and be built. That is a revenue neutral item. So we have a million dollars budgeted in there, but we will receive that million dollars back when the meters are purchased. We don't give those away for free. So there's a revenue offset. We only put in fifty percent revenue because that's all we think we can sell, but we feel like we need to get ahead on the ordering. So even if we don't receive a hundred percent of the revenue in this fiscal year, we would receive it in the next fiscal year, whereby we also may not spend that much in this fiscal year. It's just going to depend on when they drop the meters off and say, you get a hundred, you might not get a hundred for another six months. So...
And here's your bill.
Here's your bill, right. So you have to pay. So, so that is a revenue neutral item, but it's a tricky one just because of the supply chain. So thanks for asking about that.
With our tap increases on that, will that make it non-neutral, but maybe?
So we will cover our costs. We figured out we were losing seventy-five, seventy-five dollars for every tap. We increased the seventy-five dollars and then added ten percent administrative fee to cover basically the paperwork for every tap. It's not going to be a profit, but we will not continue to lose money.
Okay. So now we're just catching up again.
We're, we're filling the hole, Brad.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Other questions or comments? If not, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number...
Do I have a second?
Does this one need to be read, that the tax rate?
Do you want to read the tax rate out?
I didn't say... Let me say Agenda Item seven, because I didn't say that. Sorry. I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number seven as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or debate? If not, we will have a roll call vote as required. Ward one. Ward two. Ward three. Ward four. Mayor, aye. Any other thing to come before the council this evening?
Most adjourned.
I have a motion. Do it adjourned. Do I have a second? We're adjourned. It is seven sixteen.